Well, let's get started. We've got fair amount of book to get through and plus an article. So I expect Raymond's going to join us here before too long. But Marcus, why don't you just take it away?
We were just gonna go back into the groups that we were in before and finish de-centering whiteness chart that we started working on and then come back and debrief it so that we could get a little bit of closure on that. So that was the chart that had the four four characteristics, universalism or universal perspective, individualism, avoidance, and decontextualization. And so I will pop the link to that back in the chat. And Jennifer has the groups ready to go. And so we will just spend time in groups working on that. I think 25 minutes and then we'll come back for the last 25 minutes.
Sure. You're asking a lot of us, Marcus. I can't remember what I had for dinner last night. You're asking me to remember what we discussed last week.
But do we have that the chart that we filled in? Are we gonna get that copy to look at? Because we, I remember filling it in, but I didn't save that document. So I don't know where that document is.
Yeah, the link's in the chat. So if you click it, it should take you to
Okay.
what you were working on before. Yeah. And then just remember your same group number. So the groups numbers are also in the chat. And so it has where you were at. And then you just pick up from where you were at. And since you're not sure what you're doing, then do 30 minutes in the group and come back for the last 20. And yeah, and we need to have these four concepts in our minds beyond today's discussion. So
Are we ready to go?
Yes. Okay, so let's get it up. We've got about 10 minutes left. So I was gonna have each group kind of share something that came out of your conversation. There was something that you kind of got centered on or got into. Maybe do that. So Group One. And we'll have a board member from each of the groups be the person to speak since it's their study session. So either Martha or Dawn, were you, you guys were in group, oh, sorry, Martha or Norm, you guys were in Group One?
Unmute Martha. I need you to defer to Martha. I had to take a break. So she was involved in more of the discussion.
I need to find the document first. Okay, here we are. I don't believe that we were supposed to fill in the two center columns for unpacking and applying, but we were overachievers and did that. Each one of us took one row. So someone took universal perspective. Someone took the next. So each one of us took one of those rows. And after we had filled them in, went through and just had a general reading and there was, there was no disagreement on what we ended up with in writing. So I don't know how you want us to proceed, Marcus.
Was there any, and maybe one of the other people may want to chime in, but I'm wondering if there was any key learning that took place from reading it or from the exercise, something that it illuminated for you that wasn't as clear prior to the reading, maybe?
I'll let the others weigh in.
Well, just in one, and it just kind of came up when I, when I got back into the discussion is that in centering around the whole thing of whiteness is just creating the awareness that that has been such a cultural value is of the being the individual, the rugged individualist, do it on your own. Don't look for help. Don't and don't give credit where credit is due, you know, take all the, I mean, that's an oversimplification, but it's it's kind of, it's, it's a part of culture we need to be aware of and that other cultural groups sometimes don't operate the same way. And so it's partly, it's paying attention to how we're operating in a situation and creating an awareness of ourselves, but also know how people that we are working with, how they're operating in. And if they're operating more in a, in kind of a group, a group way of thinking or a group way of contributing and, and support and really valuing the contribution of many and seeking that from the beginning. I think it's, a lot of it is just creating awareness around that.
Thanks. On Group Two?
We spent some time off topic, but to this topic, when we discussed universal perspective, the idea that everyone experiences life in the same way. I think that the, our group's understanding of that has made us more empathetic in our workplaces. I think we're both really intentional at understanding how other people might be feeling or experiencing the same event or meaning or situation that, that we're in. So that was our main takeaway on this subject. Do you have anything to add, Anthony?
No, I think you captured that well. The, the, I think, I think we touched base that the universal perspective is defined by Singleton was the standard set by, no, I'm messing it up. I'm gonna shut up now. Thank you.
You gotta finish that. You can't go no and then start to say something and then go back to no.
You can't hang us, leave us hanging, Anthony. Come on.
I botched it up, so I'm gonna leave it alone.
All right.
That's okay.
Dawn?
Well, seeing that it was only two of us in this group, we talked about universal perspective across the board and how it is perceived that whiteness is always right and others are never really heard, but I, I just can't pull up the, the stuff that Marcus and I did. But it's, it's like, you know, having to know how to maneuver and to work as a group versus individuals and be accepted as a, as a person that has input in, in these things, in this conversation. It's been for some people, it can be challenging. And I just couldn't pull up the other piece because it blocked me out. And I'm not that technical savvy, but Marcus and I, we had a great conversation on, on this and we put together some stuff and if you pull it up, you'll see what we came up with. And it's all self-explanatory. Marcus, do you have anything else to add?
I guess what I would say is we talked a little bit about how decontextualization feels to us like just another form of avoiding that they're not different when we resort to unpack it. It's just a way of not seeing how race is showing up in a particular situation and avoiding the conversation about race as a, as a part of it. Group Four.
You want me to take that, Trevor?
You go ahead and I'll chime in.
So Marcus, it was only Trevor and I in that group today. So we spent a lot of time filling out the boxes. We didn't have
Trevor and, yeah, thank you.
I think one of the things that kind of struck, struck us both is the decontextualization that, you know, we're going through our, our lives and our work lives and a lot of the things that happen around us, there's no context for it and there's no connection to different cultures and different races. So everything's kind of white-centered. And then you, everything that people do kind of focuses on that and then other contexts, other, other you know, experiences and things that may affect what we're doing are not acknowledged. So we kind of, you know, primarily, we kind of, we didn't talk a lot because we were both busy typing, filling out the chart, frankly, but when we did talk, we, we kind of talked about that aspect of it.
I would I'll just add that in, in looking at the the unpacking, what does it mean in my life? It was a bit uncomfortable to do that because I, I like to own everything myself. And what I found through unpacking the four in that area, it seemed like all of the work was being asked of people of color. So it was, it all relates to whiteness and the, and the, the positionality of norms and, and culture and everything. And so it was, I was, I was, if I allowed myself, I could be even, I could become frustrated with that entire column because it's, it's all about what are you gonna do to unpack this? Well, why, you know, why do I have to relate myself to the universal perspective when the universal perspective is a white standard? Why do I have to worry about the individualism when I don't believe in the individualist approach? I believe in the collaborative recognition, inclusionary approach. And yet I understand the value of knowing what those are so that you can situate yourself in a way to be, I guess you would say, successful or to function. But then I have to ask the question, function according to what? You know, function according to a white standard, a white norm and success compared to what? So there's some deep, deep thinking involved in, in this charts. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think so this morning I participated as an observer in a meeting of a group of leaders and I was looking for how are these things showing up? Because the vast majority of the leaders that I was observing are white leaders. And I was looking at how did these things show up? And I was asking myself, how do you challenge it? And then I'm, it's an environment where I don't feel necessarily comfortable or invited to speak up. And so I'm observing this and I'm listening to one of the leaders basically was saying, we should take away the option for kids to have remote learning. We should take that option away from everyone and just go forward with in-person learning and just make that what we do. And I was incredibly uncomfortable because I was just like that, how can you possibly want us to make that decision for every family when we're telling adults who are working in in these spaces to stay six feet away from kids and then we're gonna send these kids home and they're not gonna be able to stay away, six feet away from the adults in their homes? And you don't know the makeup of their families and how many generations are in the household. And so I was just getting incredibly uncomfortable just listening to it. And it was like, how do I challenge this in my, you know, how do I challenge this? And it's not really my responsibility alone to challenge that. But part of the way is by asking this question of all kinds of leaders. So our, I resonate with where Trevor was at, but I also think we have to, we have to put ourselves in the situation of how to, how do we challenge those things? Because otherwise, there's a whole lot of conversations like that one where white people are just getting together and talking. And when there's no conflict surface, there's an assumption that we all feel the same way in this space. When we may not, I was even like wishing for just the, like someone to just say, is there a different point of view about this in here? So I could have then, you know, said, there's a lot of black and brown folks who are living with their parents and their grandparents. And they don't, you know, what, what is that concern if our advice is still to the adults who are in close proximity to kids to stay away, further away from kids than the other, than the kids are from one another. So it was just, to me, an example of how this whole, how these things can kind of show up. It's like that universal, like what I think will suit everyone was just on, on full display in that conversation. So yeah, this is really challenging us to think about these things. And the article that I sent you on, what is it? White, what's a white supremacy culture? Those 15 characteristics, I think they all grow out of these four characteristics. That if you start to look at what those 15 things are, they all grow out of what happens when these four things are allowed to just kind of run, run amok. So I would encourage you to look back at that and we'll look at that article specifically in our next session and what those 15 things are and how we combat them. But surfacing other voices is particularly important and it doesn't have to be, as the people of color who are in these groups, it doesn't have to be your voice, but you do have to help to get the voice surfaced and to call out when it's not. And I really appreciated what Dr. Darling had to say at the board retreat, which was, you know, he recognizes that from his perspective, from where he's at, he has to seek out other voices and perspectives as part of his decision-making. And that becomes, you know, really important for, especially for white leaders in these spaces. So that's what I would close with at this point. Martha or Trevor? Anything before we give a break before the meeting starts?
Anything to add, Trevor?
I'm gonna take a page out of Anthony's book. I would say no, yes, and no. I honestly have a ton to add, but I think sometimes just leaving it as is, is probably best. So I will defer and thank you, Marcus, for leading this. I would challenge each of us, I guess, just to say that, you know, we all, we all have to speak up. And when I said, you know, I don't want to speak up or Marcus referring to his situation. I don't know. I, I wrestle with that too. When do you speak up and when do you not? And maybe we have to just always err on speaking up because we're not in that, in that column where everything is centered around, you know, us as people of color. It has to be expressed. So anyway, I guess that's a yes, no, yes.
You said it.
Thank you, Trevor. I think this has been a pretty enlightening discussion today. I appreciate everybody participating. We've got about five minutes before our meeting starts. So if you all want to take a break and come back in five minutes, then we'll start the meeting at 4:30. Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Marcus, for leading us through this. Okay, it's 4:30 and we're gonna get started. I know Raymond has joined us. I don't know if Dawn is here or not. Or back, rather. There he is. Okay. Andrew, first, we're gonna take, take a roll call of board members to make sure that we have it officially, that everybody is here. And so I'm gonna ask Mrs. Barrett to do the roll call. And then following that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Chaplin to introduce you, okay? Okay.
Donald Davis Jr.
Here.
Graciela Villanueva.
Here.
Martha Rice.
Present.
Raymond DeVara Jr.
Here.
Norm Walker.
Here.
Thank you.
We are very honored today to have a very special guest from Stanton Academy. Today is our virtual site visit to Stanton. And normally, Andrew, we would be there in person to greet you and thank you for joining us. But I'm gonna ask Mr. Chaplin to introduce you to the crowd.
Well, good afternoon. And it is my pleasure to introduce Andrew, Andrew Burchard, who is one of our on-time graduates this year. Andrew spent the last year traveling throughout the United States while participating in remote and virtual learning here at Stanton. And he might be able to share a little bit about that. But Andrew, it's all on you now.
Thank you. Okay, can I have everyone's attention now? So if everyone could please stand, I will do the same. Hand over your heart. In three, two, one, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Nice job, Andrew. Are you a senior this year?
Yes, I am a senior to, this year.
Well, the good news is we're at least planning on having an in-person graduation ceremony.
That's very exciting.
Yeah, that'll be nice. I felt, we, we all felt really bad that we couldn't do that last year. And I know that was a disappointment to all of the seniors from last year and the families. But, you know, we're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that everybody, you know, does all the things that they're supposed to do. And then it probably won't look like the previous graduation ceremonies, but that's okay. It's just gonna, it's gonna be nice to be in person. So Mr. Chaplin said that you spent the last year traveling.
Yes. Due to COVID and it being online, I thought it would be fun to visit my family. So I drove around and visited some of my family throughout the states.
So how far east did you get?
I went to as far as where my father resides now in Wisconsin.
So how many states did you get to visit?
Just Wisconsin and Washington, Oregon.
That's quite an adventure. Then you went by yourself?
Yes, I did. It was very fun.
Good for you. Good for you. I'm gonna let other board members say hello. And if you're, if they're so inclined, they may ask you some questions or just say thank you for doing the pledge today. So Graciela.
Hi, Andrew. My name's Graciela. On your long road trips, did you listen to music or any audiobooks on, while you were driving?
I did. I do listen to music all the time.
What kind of music did you listen to?
I listened to K-pop. It's just pop, but it's Korean.
Very cool. Awesome. Well, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Hi, Andrew. This is Revan Davis. Thank you for being here today. And I'm looking forward to your graduation. But what are your plans after you graduate from high school?
I plan to attend CWU, which my elder sister already attends. She's actually graduating from CWU this year. And I plan to attend it for business.
All right. Make us proud, Andrew.
Thank you. I will.
Hi, Andrew. My name is Raymond. Just wanted to thank you for being with us today. Appreciate, I really admire your leadership and coming to the board and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. So just wanted to thank you for that. And nice meeting you.
Thank you. You too. It's always, I think it's great to take up on these opportunities to polish up my skills.
Well, you're very polished for sure. So probably thanks to your teachers and your parents and your family. Doing a good job, so.
Thank you.
Norm?
Sure. Hi, Andrew. Thanks for joining us today. I'll give you a little factoid on Central. You chose a good school to go to for business education. And they, Central, by the way, has more students pass the CPA exam on the first try than any school in the state of Washington. So they have a strong business department. I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you. I will. Yeah. My sister, who currently attends it, she very suggested me to go to it. Originally, I was just going to technical school, but she's like, you're smarter than that. You can go to a real college or a full, four-year college. You can do it in business. And she was the one that really convinced me to go to CWU along with my brother.
Well, it's a great opportunity. I hope you make the most of it.
Thank you. I will try.
Andrew, it's nice to have you with us today. Congratulations on your exploration or partial exploration of the United States. It's a wonderful opportunity to get to travel and see different parts of our country. And I hope you get a chance to continue that adventure as you get older.
Thank you.
Mr. Chaplin, do you have any other staff that have joined you or do you have any closing remarks? Before we start in on your presentation?
Oh, you had me going there for a minute, Martha. You said closing remarks. I thought we were done.
You should be
We're very proud of Andrew here at Stanton because of the effort he's taken to stay current with the virtual learning. And we had, during the spring of last year, we met on a daily basis as a staff. And the staff would report back each day in our Google meets in the morning to talk about the students that they'd been connecting with. And Andrew's name was always at the top of the list as someone who was staying up, up to date on the work he was doing. And then when we started virtually this fall and we kept hearing that Andrew was traveling, we, his, everybody said, how's he doing? He's doing great. He's staying up on it. And so he is a model student, not only for Stanton, but for Yakima as how to, to pivot and learn virtually. And since we've been going live, he's been here every day he's been able to. So we're real proud of him here. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Andrew, you're welcome to stay. But I understand that you may have other things that are pulling at you this afternoon, like dinner or homework or something like that. So feel free to leave whenever you feel the need to. And again, thank you for being here. You, we, we all look forward to seeing you in person at graduation.
Thank you. Yeah, I do have other matters to attend to. But thank you for having me here. It was a great honor. And I was very happy to take up on this opportunity. Thank you, everybody.
Take care.
You all for your education. I love education.
Thank you, Andrew. Have a great evening.
Thank you, too.
Okay, before we get into Mr. Chaplin's presentation, we do have a land acknowledgement. And the board shares every meeting, we share the responsibilities for reading this. And so I'm gonna ask Raymond to read tonight's land acknowledgement.
Yes, Martha. Today, the schools of the Yakima School District rest on ancestral lands of the 14 Confederate tribes. lands of the 14 Confederate tribes and bands of the Yakima Nation. The people of Yakima Nation inhabited more than 12 million acres across Adams, Benton, Shalan, Douglas, Franklin, Grant, Kidittas, Clickitat, and Yakima Counties. Today, we honor those native peoples who are tied to the land through history, legends, and culture. We acknowledge their descendants who live in the world today. We thank the caretakers of this land who have lived here and continue to live here since time immemorial. And acknowledgement is a simple, powerful way to show respect and a step towards correcting the stories and practices that erase indigenous peoples' history and culture. It is also, it also honors the truth. As a school district, we will continue to build upon our relations with the Yakima Nation.
Thank you, Raymond. Next on our agenda is the school presentation by Mr. Chaplin.
Does that mean I'm on?
It does, unless you'd like somebody else to start this for you.
Nope, it's just me. I had a whole bunch of people lined up and then caught word that it was just supposed to meet me. So I jumped in and asked for anybody else who wanted to volunteer to help. And they ran fast.
They had other things that demanded their attention this afternoon.
Sharon Harris, my assistant principal, was going to be here this evening, but she was lucky enough to get her second vaccination this weekend and felt the effects of it today. And while we are checking, doing their attestations this morning, she got a little lightheaded. And so I sent her home and she said she'd be here in spirit. So that's why Sharon isn't here. She didn't want to be here.
Well, give her, give her our best.
I will. And I'm gonna share a PowerPoint that I started. And I'm gonna drive you nuts like I drive my staff nuts. So you're going to see my whole screen because I'm going to bounce back and forth as we do this, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead. That's pretty.
Okay, just to go a little tidbit on the, the, the talk that Raymond gave, I found out today that the word stakeholder wasn't one that we should be using. And so I had to do some changes. And that's because the, when the settlers came out west and drove stakes into the lands of the indigenous people, that's what the word, where the word stakeholder came from. So I had to go in and change a few stakeholders to collaborators. I'd like to welcome you to the Yakima Alternative Programs, which is a word I've been using to describe the programs that I'm responsible for. And that would be Stanton Academy, which is our high school, of course. And then we have Contract Education, which is Chris Hunter's program. And that is an ALA program for high school students that have trouble adjusting to a traditional high school schedule and days. Kids at work, we have some teen moms that are on a, on the contract education program. We have some people, students who have transitioned out of incarceration, who go into contract education because of difficulties with the population. They may have other focuses than the students that are attending Stanton. And then we also have the Ridgeview Group Home, which is, we have the Ridgeview Group Home, which is a JRA facility and JRA Juvenile Rehabilitation. And then.
Dave, we're only, we're only seeing, we're not seeing your presentation. We're only seeing like a screensaver or something.
Now, are you seeing it?
No. Seeing a very pretty picture of a rocky canyon.
Oh, okay. Says I'm sharing my screen. Just a second.
I, I kept waiting for the analogy.
Said present, I'm sharing. Let me go back to the meeting. Present now. That is Cowidge Canyon, Jewel. And now I'm on Juvenile Detention Center. And then the last but not least is our Educational Opportunity Center. Our Educational Opportunity Center are those students who are long-term suspended or expelled, and that's grades six through graduate, six through 12, as is the Juvenile Detention Center. And so I just wanted to make sure that you knew that's what we're doing here. And let me go to the next slide. I want to thank all of you on the Yakima School Board of Directors and Superintendent Green for letting me have the opportunity to work with all these programs. It's, it's a, an assignment that I have thoroughly enjoyed since taking it over. It offers a challenge and a way for me to get back to the community by supporting our students who, for one reason or another, sometimes are on the edge of, or they're not as advocated for in different situations within the community or within school districts, sometimes by their choices. And sometimes they just, they get lost on their way. And so I find it very exciting that, to work with these kids, because this is where you see the most growth. And I just want to make sure that you know I'm proud to be here and I'm, I really enjoy having this opportunity. And also would like to thank you for the strategic plan, which allows us to work to make sure that we are working with our goals to meet the strategic plan goals. The mission statement for the alternative programs are students and caregivers and staff working together towards graduation with focus on literacy, relationships, and collaboration. Because without those, it is very difficult for our students to progress in academic situations. And I have kept the excellent vision statement. We have kept the excellent vision statement that was started so many years ago by Mr. Endicott with beginning with the end in mind. And our beginning is when we get the students who come through our doors. And the first thing we tell them is we will work with you to get to a diploma. And so that's where we start. And part of my presentation tonight will be about how we start that and what we focus on. And if you have questions to this, please don't hesitate to ask. Currently, we're in the third year, third and final year of our comprehensive school improvement cycle. We are a comprehensive school based on about everything they use to base the comprehensive school improvement designation on. Our current, like I said, our current plan focuses on connections, engagement, and literacy. Our pandemic experiences played a significant role in our planning for the future. One of the things that we had to do is adjust our, our plan to meet the needs of our staff and our students moving forward. And we did that in June. We adjusted the, the plan to meet the demands of the pandemic for when we entered into the fall, which included focusing on teacher education in a virtual platform and then making connections with students who were not engaging with their education or weren't coming to school. And we've spent a lot of our time this school year doing that. The planning that we did in June has shaped what we're going to be doing moving forward. And that's keeping a lot of the components of the virtual instruction to help with those students who may not attend, but still engage when they are not attending. We had one student who, before the shutdown last March, didn't come to school hardly at all. But when we went virtual, the student passed every class, attended every day, and was very successful. So we see that there is a place for the virtual platform in the area of alternative ed. And we plan to do that moving forward in our next three-year cycle of improvement. We've been taking the Improvement Science Training with the ESD, and it's really narrowed our focus on these three areas. But what we're doing within the three areas is going to probably look a little, a little different. We have been focusing on reaching out to our ninth graders. We have 20, we had 21, now we have 29th graders that have been identified, they've been with us since the beginning of the year. But it wasn't until the first of March where we actually got to see them in person. And so we've been working all month of March to, to establish a connection with them, not only with the people they see in the classroom and the people they see with, coming in the front door, but just to establish a connection with them as a whole, so that they know everybody on staff. And that's everybody from our, myself, to the teachers, to the classified staff. And I'll show you a connection scoreboard we're using with them as we move forward. The engagement practices, that is used utilizing our Canvas platform and developing a consistent Canvas platform that students get into so they know where their work is if they have missed school, and they can get to it and work themselves through it. Literacy, we have used an enga, literacy model where we have the students take a selection and then pull the pertinent information out of that over the course of the past seven years. And we had to adjust from that when we went virtual because it, it wasn't working the way we had done it. And so we, we have spent a little bit of time this fall kind of reworking it. But moving forward, we're going to take the best of the way we used to do it and move it forward the best we can after we get all back, meaning all of our students back. Into our, what I'm looking at with our ILT is focusing on number two, which is empowering of students who are supported, connected, engaged in their education. We have found that's the best way for us to keep our students coming to school on a regular basis is number one, get that, get that connection with them, get them feeling like Stanton is a family. It's a place where you can go, where you're safe, and you can interact with the education, with the teachers on a personal level, where the teachers know you by name, and they know how to best reach you, your learning, and, and help you progress. After we get that, then we're going to work on the goals in three, four, and five. And goal number one, which is the early learning, we try to take care of in our childcare. And that, it was evident by the support that Superintendent Green gave us and the COVID Task Force in the fall to get our families back, who have been some of our best attenders since the pandemic started. And you see Victor there in the pink sweatshirt with his son Daniel. He, those two have been regular attenders all year. They have the best attendance record. So using our, the compass that the district and the community have developed for us, I want to kind of go through some areas that we're working on and just kind of highlight what we're going to be doing to meet those five areas on the compass. And so as we move forward, let me turn my page here. First of all, for goal one, that's the Stanton childcare is our basis for that. And there, and right now, we have 12 families signed up. The caregivers, we're going to be using the, the curriculum that the childcare, the childcare room has for that. It's under the direction of Early Childhood Education with licensing under DCYF. And so we followed that as closely as possible to prepare them for preschool, which they will enter when either the parents graduate or they get of an age where they can attend if the parent is still attending here. And on goal number two, the mental health focus, this is a big focus of ours here at Stanton, because until we can connect with the kids and develop that relationship and get them engaging in coming to school, it's very hard for us to educate them and to teach them. So this will be a bulk of our presentation tonight. The first thing that we do when we get students is we do an intake with caregivers and the students. We're having seven students coming in for the next quarter. Sarah, my, Sarah Hole, who is my social emotional specialist, has developed a team of staff who are going to meet with the parents and the students to kind of take an entry dipstick, if you will, on what's going to help us reach out to this student. Starting in the fall, we call this Sarah's List. And in the fall, we assigned case managers to each of the students who were enrolled at Stanton. And so for the fall, we took the responsibility of calling each week our students and then keeping track of the ones we got a hold of. If we got a hold of them in week eight, then there is a Y here. And then we took data on what was, who interacted with the parent or the child or the student. And this is the information that we collected. And so our, you see Anita's in yellow. She was the case manager for these students here. And then when we entered tutoring, we started keeping track of the different demographics of the students so we could determine if they were eligible for tutoring or not. And so I had a, about, oh, I think there was eight of us who were in the, who were on the, are you seeing the PowerPoint again?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's eight of us who are case managers. The case managers were myself, Sharon, Sarah Hole, Martha Guzman, my bilingual specialist who had worked with EL students, my migrant specialist who worked with the migrant students. And then we had a couple other staff members. One was my attendance person. And so that was, this was, oh, another was my security guard. And so these were people who were doing over and above, I mean, they weren't doing their jobs. They were being case managers so that we could keep track of our students. And that way, we can keep an appropriate connection with the students while they were out there. And we weren't always successful. I would love to say we were. The next thing I want to show is we're trying to get to where we have a database that is searchable from, for other students or other staff to see so they can see where we're at here. Let me change, well, this, there we go. This is a searchable database up here. It tells what, what the designation of the student is, days possible, days absent, credit. Because what I'm finding is, is that our, we're able to see this as case managers, but my, the rest of my staff is not able to see what we're doing with the, with the students outside of the classroom. And so we want our teachers to be able to see what is happening so that they have an idea of what is happening so that we can keep everybody on task with what's going on. And so that is the searchable database. And we would also like to establish some case managers for individual students who are, we're, right now, we're using our non-teaching staff. And it's getting more difficult as our normal job assignments come back into line when students are coming back. The next thing we used was Anita's Engagement List. And I won't show that one. It, what that one is, is Anita took our attendance, and it was on a spreadsheet. And then she took the attendance from the classroom, the work the students were doing, and we graphed that. And we tiered the students out in a, in ones that were not engaging at all versus ones who were either rising up and engaging more or falling down and engaging less. And then those who are engaging on a regular basis. And then we could focus on those students. If they're rising up, we would move from supporting them as much to supporting the ones who are dropping down to the, we had them color-coded as red, from, to a tier three, and work with those who were dropping down, finding out why they weren't engaging, and then moving them up. And we met once weekly, the team, to determine what the needs of the students were. And then to get work out to the students and to do home visits, we utilized Kimberly's Closet, which I've talked about in board meetings before. But we have students who have big families and they can't get to the feeding sites. And so what would happen is Kimberly and a host of other people would do Friday visits, taking food to them and delivering the food to them. and delivering the food to them and also taking work and also supporting our CTE classes by taking projects out to the students to do. Um, and if the kids had, we have some kids who are couch surfing who needed um laundry and stuff like that done, then she would support them by bringing the clothes back washing and then taking them out. And um, sorry. And then the last one would be our focus on freshmen this year. And that's using a connection scoreboard such as we have done in the past where we have all our freshmen listed in the, in a column and our staff listed across the top, and then we rate our connections a one, two or three. And then we find the students who don't have those connections and we focus on increasing the number of connections that those students have. And again, I can show that to you, but I'm noticing I'm taking a lot of time here. One of the things that we do also after a student has been with us is we start an individualized education plan. And this meets our, our goal three, I think, and we do a credit check on the student. And I want to show you one of the credit checks that we do and that we keep on the student from the time they are enrolled. We look at their transcripts, we see what they have, and as we do this, if they've got all their English nine stun, then you see these four squares, that's four quarters of English nine. And so when a student comes in, we'll look at the the transcripts they have. We'll fill this in to help designate where the holes are in whatever they, whatever they have taken in the past. A number of our students come to us and they have transcripts from three different places. And so this helps us identify what the students need. And so we schedule them to meet their needs and plus it helps us keep track of where they're going. And then we update this on a quarterly basis. This is something we've been doing for a number of years, so this isn't just focused on the pandemic. Uh, what we did then, this is just what we do for students when they come in. The other thing we do is we look at their educational history in middle school. And by doing that, we can go all the way back to middle school. And we can see where they were successful in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. This is a student who came to us after attending one other high school and we see that their grades started dropping in math when they were in seventh grade. And then in eighth grade, the math grades were real low, so we know there's going to be some holes in math and science. And then we look at where they went after middle school and we see that they did nothing there. So we know that there's going to be some large holes there for this student. And so that is another thing that we use for targeting scheduling. We do all of our schedules with by hand so that we make sure we're not putting a student someplace that's going to be over their heads or we're going to push them at the right level. In our career technical education, we utilize them a lot for um say our culinary science class counts as a lab class or lab science class. If a student needs that, then we do that. And if they need elective or a CTE, we utilize that as well. One of the main reasons we use our career tech, technical education is to prepare students for uh a career afterwards, a technical college or something like that. We just had our first graduate in our Opportunity Knox Scholarship graduate from Perry this uh past week and we celebrated that here because the student has a job at Baxter Construction now. So that was an exciting thing for us. That's the first time we'd had that happen with this scholarship, I should say. Um, celebrating language skills, we have had a lot of success with our, with the um uh, excuse me. Bilingual by literacy um uh certificate. Our students, these are our students who are the first year and it uh we push that a lot because a lot of our students have these skills and these abilities and they don't realize it until they find how well they do on this assessment. And a lot of our students are able to graduate because they pass this assessment. And we have a hundred and ten learner students right now who are identified as English learners enrolled in our school. As you can see in the, down at the bottom there, two thousand seventeen, we had three. Oh, this is two thousand eighteen, we have seven. We had six in two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty, we had thirteen students. Our graduation rates, we bo- again, we believe with beginning with the end of mind and as you can see with our seven-year cohort graduation rates, our graduation rates improve as we go. We quite often have people who are twenty-one years old graduating. And those are seniors who came to us with very few credits. And I had a young man say today that why should he stay in school? He's a senior and he only has twelve credits. And I said, well, because that means you can graduate in two years rather than not graduating at all. And so we we utilize these numbers to really demonstrate to our students the importance of sticking with it and not giving up because it is always possible. Oh, profile of our graduate, when I looked at my, some of my peers' presentations, they chose one or had one graduate up there and I, I, because I'm so proud of my kids, I I chose one for each of the areas. And so I'm gonna kind of talk about each one there if you'll bear with me. Um, the first one is a critical thinker and problem solver. This young lady came to us as a junior and she came to us, she had two children under the age of three. And her goal was to get a diploma so she could support those two children. And so for two years she came in the, in the heat, in the cold with those two young children. And she'd come walking in and we'd say good morning and we've got to watch the kids grow. And um, we figured that she really had to be a problem solver to graduate when she did. And her two kids, we got to see them grow up and she got her diploma last summer in June. And we, in talking to my staff, we figured, we felt that she was a very critical thinker and problem solver. And then uh, a resilient learner, this young lady has been in more than five different high school programs. One of them was uh Ridgeview Group Home. And through her, all that time, she wanted to go to college and through the um work of teachers at Stanton and Nancy Lust at Ridgeview Group Home and Donna Kelly, we put her on the right track. She qualified for the Opportunity Knox Scholarship. She has a full ride scholarship to um, she's currently at YBC, but she is doing very well there in studying for the degree of her choice and she has a full ride until she gets to completion. And for a resilient learner, I have known this young lady since she went to Barge Lincoln in elementary school. I knew her family when her sister was there as well. And then she went to Washington with me. And then after Washington, she tried another school and then came to us. And all the time, this young lady lived in a, in a home that was no bigger than my office, I would think. And she shared it with her brother and her mother. And it had two rooms, the living area and the bathroom. And she walked to school and she had to be one of the smartest kids in this class and she worked hard and got great grades all the way through. And she was uh what, very admired by our staff. And I have nothing but respect for this young lady, knowing the places she's had to go through to get where she graduated last year. Uh, personal accountability and responsibility. This young lady has been what was with us for three or four years. And she moved out of her mother's house because there was a situation that caused that to happen. She moved in with her sister who had three kids and then another sister had to give her four kids to her and her sister she was living with. And so the family wouldn't be broken up. They had to navigate DCYF in order to um take over guardianship of those kids so they wouldn't break up the family. And this young lady during her senior year was working on that. And she was taking responsibility for the kids. She had a job and she managed to graduate last year. And again, very responsible and very accountable for her family. This young man um is very effective communicator. Not only, he would have been here doing the pledge if we would have um done this last year because he was an effective community, he still is an effective communicator. He also was awarded the Opportunity Knox Scholarship and is currently um attending a school on the East Coast. And he did a lot of presentations, not only to the school board, but to other groups that came in just to demonstrate the level of um commitment to education that the students here at Stanton have. Um, and then this last person is a young lady who came to us again, living with her sister who moved out of that situation and spent some months on a couch and um spent some time at Rod's House who got her into the Bestie Program, which is a of uh organization that's affiliated with Rod's House. And then from there she graduated and started attending YVCC. And from there she started working her job at Starbucks and became an employee at Rod's House as an advocate advocate for homeless youth and has worked there for the past two years. And has demonstrated how much she is a community-minded person. When she was here, she worked very hard with our leadership team in volunteering at the, at the mission and then at the uh doing the uh harvest, Operation Harvest over at uh Henry Bochamp Center. And as you look at that uh picture, who, of all of our graduates, you will see students that come to us from every program here at Stanton. Not only Chris Hunter's, but Ridgeview Group Home, JDC, uh Stanton, we didn't have EOC there. But some of them would have been in the EOC. Um, one of the things that it really been, I have found rewarding is combining the different programs that we have available to us to help all students succeed. At JDC and uh the JRA facility at Ridgeview Group Home, students often attend Stanton and um take part in activities here uh just because it helps them transition, which is one of the goals of the group home. It helps them transition into public school from an incarcerated pro- program. And uh Ja- James Kelly, our chef here in our culinary sciences has taught classes for the girls at the Ridgeview Group Home, credit classes in uh culinary sciences which um have helped them earn credits for their CTE and help them in the transition process. We have a young man at JDC who's a long-term person there who uh is working with Dale Mapes currently. Dale gives up his, some time on Wednesday to teach robotics to this young man who probably won't get out of incarceration until at the earliest twenty-five. And he works one-on-one with Dale over there. Uh, Kimberly, my security guard, was over there helping the teachers log on to the computers, helping the students log on so they could connect with the teachers. And has developed a lot of connections with the students there who, when they're released, will transition to Stanton. And so being involved in all those programs has really helped students transition in a much better position than when they went in. Um, Chris Hunter's contract education came to me three years ago and working collaboratively with her, with students who when they enroll here, they haven't been in school for a number of years, it really helps for them to go work with her and if need be, transition back into our program if that's where they want to go. But we have worked very hard to make it a collaborative uh environment and I think she's happy here. Um, we're happy that she's here because it's really added to the opportunities that our students have here at Stanton. EOC, we have gotten a lot of students who participated in the EOC when they're in middle school. They are now at Stanton and they are attending here. Um, I think sometimes when they're here for EOC, they see that this is a place that's smaller than the middle school they're in or they're suspended or expelled from one of the other two high schools. And they see the interaction that our students have here because we end up being able to work with those students after they're off of their expulsions or long-term suspensions. And so we've been very happy to have that program here too. One of the biggest things that I think our program strives to do is to develop hope for our students, hope that they may not have had before they came to us. And that hope is, you know, helping them get a sense of success and returning to a system regardless of what that system is where they have the perception that it has failed them. And I think that in my mind is a foundation for resilience when they learn to trust something and learn that they still can be successful. And I know my staff work hard to make that happen. And we at Stanton work very hard to make sure we do that every day that we come to work. These are all of our community partners. I'd like to highlight a few. Um, the Henry Bochamp Center and OIC have been very good about helping us with um people who may not have food security by donating food to us to get out to our parents, not only during the school year, but during the summer. Last summer, I had teachers and Kimberly who would go over to uh Henry Bochamp Center and load up on food and then pass it out to the kids. Uh, the Mazana Foundation, who funds our Opportunity Knox Scholarship was, which is, offers full ride scholarships to just Stanton students. And that is opening doors for students to go to any college of their choice or any trade school, which is how our young man uh earned his uh certificate in construction. And I'm mentoring a student who is in his second year in automotive at YBC. And then last year we have ten students who are on the scholarship who are doing much, who are doing just as well. Yakima Federal Savings and Loan who donate to our um InvestEd Fund, which helps us in buying clothes for scoot students who come to us and are in need of clothes or food or anything that we can help to break down those barriers for those students getting here. And then the Yakima Valley Community uh Foundation. We really pleased that they help support us getting our washer and dryer, our industrial washer and dryer that we use for laundering the clothes that are donated or the clothes that our students need laundered before they come to school because we do have a number of students who are embarrassed to come to school because of the shape their clothes are in. And I just want you to take a look at these students because every one of these students has a story that I mean, the story, one of the things I say that most of the kids in this picture have lived through more things than I'll live through in my life and I just turned sixty-one. And some of the things that they've gone through, I don't know if I would have made it through. But I can point to one or two or three or four or ten of these kids and tell you a story that that they've had to go through to get where they're at in this picture. And I'd love to show a picture of my twenty twenty, but we weren't able to get a group photo. And I see them and and it just brings back pride, not only where I work, but the kids I work with. And that's it.
Thank you, Dave. That was a great presentation. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
No, no questions for me, but Dave, just want to thank you for all the work we, uh, you, you do with our kids um at Stan and all, all of those other um al- alternative programs. There, you know, obviously kids that and need some additional supports and so glad that you're able to, to, to provide that. So thank you and your staff for all your work.
Thank you, Graciela. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a comment to make. So Dave, just wanted to thank you.
So Dave, just wanted to thank you for your leadership and please send, send our, our best and our thanks to the faculty and staff there at Stanton as well. You know, I've, I've seen firsthand the work that you do. You go, and I think you alluded to it a little bit, but, and you're being modest. But you guys, all of you go above and beyond being a principal, being a teacher, being a, a staff, and you go above and beyond to help these students be successful. And I know that it's not always that, that the result is not always a result that, that you want. And I know that it's difficulty in kids walk away not, not reaching their goals, but I know that they're walking away with hope, they're walking away knowing they have some strengths, they have some abilities, they have some potential. I know that. And maybe not in seven years, maybe in 10 years, they'll, they'll think back. Oh, I remember Mr. Chaplin, I remember Stan Academy and, so I think the work that you do. We might, for some of those students, we don't see the results now, but we do see them in, in further down the road. So just wanted to thank you for your leadership and also the faculty and staff there and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Raymond. Any other comments or questions from board members?
Well, just a thank you today for, like everyone else has said, for you and, and this work that your staff is doing. And I know you have significant challenges probably every day and you have many surprises come your way. I was just curious, you mentioned a couple of times that you have some mental health supports in your system. How much of that is in-house and do we contract outside for some of that work and how's that structured?
This year, we were lucky enough to get a social emotional specialist who is very dynamic and very who works very hard to work with the students and outreach and she has a lot of connections with the local mental health professionals in the, in the area. And she's teaching us a lot of how to access those people. And so that would be our in-house and then she works directly with Omar Santoy for, I mean, through the district supports too.
Okay.
And then, then I have all my staff who volunteer to do the things they do to support the kids as well.
So, so we have how many students in the Stanton program?
I have, right now I have 298 on the books.
Okay. And, and one, is your support person a certified counselor?
Yes, she is. Certified, yeah. And she has worked with, she's worked with incarcerated youth. And so she has some expertise there that we are benefiting from too.
Oh, that sounds like a great match. Yeah, thanks.
It's been a wonderful match.
Thank you, Norm. Don, do you have any comments or questions before we go to Trevor?
You guys said it all. Thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you, Don. Trevor, you raised your hand?
Thank you, Martha, Director Rice. Dave, thank you so much for the presentation. I, I the comments about hope and I know that Stanton is a place not only of hope, but a place where action happens. And I think back to the closing of school, the pandemic and Dr. Darling and I going to different schools and seeing what was happening when we started then with the reentry and it, the work that is being done and the attitude of staff under your leadership is something that I wish we could assure happened everywhere throughout the district. So you are serving as a, as, as an example of taking students where they are, no matter what the circumstances. And looking at the future and creating those opportunities of hope and, and creating action for them to move forward. I am quite sure that they do recognize even now the value of, of the staff that cares for them. And the efforts that you put forth. So I, I want to thank you publicly for your leadership, for all that you've done and continue to do. I find myself jealous at the work that you do in being so close to students and staff in so many different areas with high needs and that can't be understated. So you're doing a phenomenal job. Thank you for the presentation today and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trevor. I want to add my thanks to Dave. I will echo what you said in that many of the students that you serve have encountered barriers and bumps along the way that many of us can't even imagine. Let alone trying to overcome them. And when I hear some of the stories that you've shared with us, you know, here and in past presentations and, and such. My heart just breaks for these, for these kids because they are they may be, they may be more mature than their age for all that they have had challenging them, but they are still young youngsters and they've had to grow, many of them have had to grow up very, very quickly. I very much appreciate all the support that you and your staff provide to the students. As well as giving them the occasional kick in the rear end when they need it. Thank you so much for your presentation. Keep up the good work and know that we on the school board are really proud to have you as the principal of Stanton.
I'm trying to use my spacebar. I just want to thank all of you for the opportunity to present what a phenomenal job my staff does because it would be wrong to say I do anything. I just try to make sure they get the ability to do it. And to implement the ideas that they have because they are a phenomenal staff. And thank you all for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Dave. You're welcome to stay. We have a little bit more to take care of on our agenda this afternoon. And you're welcome to stay, but I understand if you have other things that are calling to you and feel free to leave whenever you need to.
I think I'll use Andrew's out.
That was a great excuse.
Okay, you guys have a great evening.
Take care, Dave.
Bye bye.
Next item on our agenda is a superintendent update. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Director Rice. Some short announcements, you already took one of them from me, so I will restate it. And that is the announcement of outside graduation for Davis Eisenhower and Stanton. That was certainly mentioned earlier, it was in a communication I shared out. It should be no surprise to the board, it was in the paper as well. So it wasn't too much of a this is the first opportunity to share it in this setting. So we are excited about the opportunity to hold an outside graduation. I believe, I have no idea historically where that falls in the history of our district. If it would be the first or not, but it's certainly the first outside graduations that we'll have in a long, long time, if not ever. So there will be planning going on to make sure that Davis Eisenhower and Stanton are participants in outside graduation at Zefal. Stanton will be using one side of the stadium. We will have the stage set in the end zone for both Davis and Eisenhower. The logistics will be figured out at the end of April. I do have some meetings scheduled with both principals and other personnel to make sure that we can pull this off. But we're excited about being able to celebrate our, our current seniors and we recognize that there may be limitations on attendance. But we are continuing to try to get in front of that. And hope that our public will be understanding if there are ticket limitations, which I would anticipate. Are there any questions about outside graduations at this time? Thank goodness.
Maybe we'll get, maybe we'll get to use that great big scoreboard.
Absolutely, absolutely. The next announcement is one of the mascot update at Washington Middle School. So I did move forward with the decision on which, which mascot to select. And you may remember that it was between the Wolverine the Lions and I believe the Hornet or Yellow Jacket. Sorry, Jewel, we did not go with the Hornet or the Yellow Jacket. She was there yelling, yes, 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 lobbying even now. We also did not go with the one, or I should say, I did not select the one with the highest percentage of votes, which was the Wolverine. We are going with the Lions. The Lions, there are several reasons culturally to go with the Lions when you're talking about building excitement, enthusiasm within a, within a school culture. We love the idea of the, the pride, a lion, pride, of course, of Washington. Pride being a group of lions, also the royalty, the majestic visualization of, of, of a lion. You talk about the King of Beasts. Also thinking of fierceness for athletics and things like that would be something that the leadership at Washington felt that they could really build upon. And we are moving forward with some mockups of of what the mascot will look like. So credit goes to Kirsten Fitterer for giving us some ideas around a palette color. And also presenting several options that we could then work with to move forward with the new mascot at Washington, the Washington Lions. Are there any questions around that selection or around the mascot change?
Questions from board members? I'm kind of glad that you didn't choose the Wolverine. I thought that, that depiction that we saw was just kind of really mean.
Well, hopefully I'll get in good graces with Jewel someday in the future, but thank you, Martha. And that, that leads to maybe just the last thing that I would just mention to the board, and this may be an item for discussion later today, however you choose. In items of board interest perhaps, but it may be a good time for the board to start thinking about a suggestion around full entry in the fall. So we know that several districts in our area are already talking about going to full entry as early as mid to late April. We also benefited from the sound council coming from you as school board members. And during the summer, when you gave the advice, the council to announce that we would not even consider reopening until the second semester. And that proved to be a very stabilizing force for our community and for our staff. This would of course be a, a different approach. It would be declaring that we will go or should go full open in the fall. Provided that the numbers continue to decline and that everybody's fully vaccinated, which I believe that it would, that would happen. And the reason I would ask the board to at least have a conversation about that at some point is so that our community could have some knowledge about what the fall could look like, especially at a time where families are considering what to do with other districts opening around us and knowing that they will be open in the fall, most likely. So I just wanted to put that in your, in your ear to perhaps at least have a conversation that would benefit the public here and also potentially our cabinet in discussions that we'll have later this week and this month. And that, that concludes my superintendent update.
Thank you, Trevor. Any questions for Trevor on his superintendent update?
I, I do just have maybe a comment, but before that discussion, I would like to look at, you know, what are some of the parameters? I guess, you know, currently we do have some state guidance from the governor and CDC and so forth. So I know that's changing all the time, but I'd like to, to maybe review those before we, we have that discussion and I know exactly what documents or, or, or parameters that we need to refresh ourselves in. So I just wanted to suggest that.
I think that's a wise suggestion. We, the governor did have a press conference last week. And at that time, he changed from the distance between students from six feet to three feet. But it wasn't a requirement, it was optional. And so I'm not sure if we're going to see another press conference or another group of decisions from him in the near future, but I expect we'll see some, you know, before, certainly before September, probably before the end of the school year. Our next board meeting is on the 12th. It's a Monday, Monday afternoon meeting. Trevor, do you think that we could provide the board with the, the, that checklist of 16 conditions? As well as the bullet points from the governor's presentation, press conference and anything from OSPI? So that we could have that as a basis for our discussion on the 12th?
I could share with the board more documentation than you would probably want to review. And I apologize in advance that it most likely will not be in a easily digestible form. But I would also be inclined to share its format as distributed either from the governor or from OSPI, so that you have it in its entirety. I, I will say that just as Raymond referenced, you know, things change and things will continue to change. But I will give you the latest, the most current information. And fully expect another announcement from the governor. This is just personally with a definitive declaration about the fall. Regardless, I, I truly believe that we are headed the direction that I'm pointing us in full reentry in the fall, but the answer is yes, I will provide the information to the board so that you are up to date on all of the latest information coming from OSPI and the governor's office.
Are there other board members who would wish to discuss this in our board meeting on the 12th? Just raise your hand or a thumbs up or something would work. Okay, perfect. Jennifer, could you add this as an agenda item on the 12th? And so we can be prepared. We don't have a meeting the week of spring break, so so we can be prepared to have this as a discussion. I think it's, I think it's important to have this kind of a discussion sooner rather than later so that we can get, the families get the word and they can be prepared. Okay. Anything else on this topic or questions about Trevor's other pieces that he shared with us during his update? Okay, next item is the COVID-19 update. Trevor?
Thank you. And with our most current information, very excited to hear again tonight from our dynamic duo. First, we'll start with Jewel Brumley. And then Ms. Stacy Locke, both of our COVID team members. Jewel, please.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. So this is the line graph of the daily cases in Yakima County. If you notice, we kind of have that up down as we go through the weeks. This is from February to currently today. Go to the next one, Jennifer. If you notice, this is the same thing, but in a bar graph, but if you notice a pattern, at the beginning of the week, the numbers are low. And at the middle to end of the week, the numbers are higher. It almost follows that every single week. So just pointing that out. Our daily rate per hundred thousand for two weeks went up a little this last two weeks, 215.6. And our weekly rate, so the seven day rate also went up to 114.1. So we never got below 100 yet. But we're on the upswing right now.
Jewel, could you go back one, actually?
Sure, sure.
And, and I would invite any
Backwards.
Yeah.
Jennifer.
Right, right there. Thank you. And I would invite any of my cabinet Right, right there. Thank you. And I would invite any of my cabinet members that were, happened to be on the call today that may have interpreted what Ryan Ibach shared any different than I did. So I'll give it a first crack. Members of the board, we see that on March 27th, the read, the count for the 14 day rate is 215. Ryan Ibach from the Health District shared today that when that number dips below 200, that is when they are going to activate the reduction from six to three feet. And we were not able to get a definitive number of days that that has to dip below 200. My recollection from the conversation today was that it only has to dip below that once for them to make that decision, but I can't be for sure on that. I don't know. Stacy, did you have any other understanding?
That was my understanding. Once we were under-
So even if that pops back up past 200, the Health District will have, at some point, make that decision that it is okay to then reenter more students from the six foot to three foot distance. Anyway, I had to point that out because that information was fresh from this morning. Thank you, Jewel.
I'm, I'm curious if, you know, one of the things I'm reading nationally is that they're anticipating we're going to see another spike in infections. And if we remain above 200 or spike back up in this community, which we were, are likely to do, especially after spring break, I think when you take a break like that, you, people party and have fun and get together and then we spread more COVID. And so if we continue to go up again, is the county or the state talking about us going back to phase two and not staying in phase three? What's the conversation on that?
The, the conversation on that is very limited. There is a, a, the, the, the picture being painted right now is all around getting the numbers down or getting the number down and getting the students back in. So I have my own personal opinions about the approach that is being taken, whether it's a little too aggressive, or maybe it has to do with some pressure that could be playing out in different areas of the state, Olympia and other places. But the conversation has not been around the what if of going back up. So I do hold, I, I heard that concern in your voice there, Norm. I think that is a great thing to bring up. I am very glad that, that we're, we're approaching at the number that we're at. However, I would anticipate, and I saw Stacy nodding, that we are in agreement that after spring break, we would anticipate that that would go back up and that we would again then be waiting for it to dip down over the next couple of weeks. So I, I do think that we are doing the right thing, staying in our hybrid status, even when we have had districts around us kind of put a line in the sand that they are going back regardless. We have continued to err on the side of caution, especially given the number of multi-generation, generational households that we have. Stacy, anything to add?
No, I think the information I'm going to share here shortly will, will demonstrate that as well, Trevor.
Thank you.
So, sorry, they did say, and you said speak up, Trevor, so I'm going to speak up, but they did say that in the event that the number dips below 200, they're not going to revisit it again if it goes back above the 200. So that, like, if you take that 246 number, if the number goes below 200 even for, you know, one week, they'll approve the going to the three foot space. And then if it jumps back up to one of those higher numbers, they're going to stay at that three feet of space regardless of the change after that point. So that is something to keep in mind. Thankfully, spring break is sooner rather than later, but you could easily see a situation where they approve a reduction in the space right before spring break and then all kinds of crazy breaks out during spring break and that decision is not revisited.
I, I feel that if they're making those types of decisions, they're taking what we could do to stay safe. That's, to me, that's irresponsible to make a decision before spring break and then to say that you're not gonna revisit staying hybrid. For me, in this area, and I agree with Norm, that we may take a spike, and I would rather be on the side of caution to stay in hybrid until we get a consistency of low numbers below 200 or even below 100, 150, 160. Then we can do that. I, I'm in favor of going, looking at going full force in the fall, but for right now, because there is maybe another surge coming. If we don't continue to wear masks, even if you got both shots, it's still cover up, it's still distance. And for me, I, I don't see the logic in making the decision after you go below 200, and if it rises up two days later, you can't go back into hybrid. That doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, Director Davis, and thank you, Marcus. I do appreciate you speaking up. And I love that you worked all kinds of crazy into your statement as well. Are there any other questions from the board before we go back to Jewel? And I'm sure Jewel might give us some projection about what we could be looking at after spring break. So she is nodding.
Yes, Trevor, I, I know we had discussed polling parents, families, whether or not they would be interested in returning to in person. And have we done that yet? Do we have any projections on, on who might return and who might go to online or who might want remote learning?
I would, I know that right now, we currently do have a, a poll going on that I believe it looks like, I know that Kirsten is out today, so I think we could follow up with that. Oh, there she is. She's here. Kirsten, would you like to interject any information that you might have on that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try. There's a lot of background noise for me, so if you can't hear me, just wave and I'll mute. But yes, I was going to tell you that we have three polls going on right now, none that specifically asked that question, though, if they're going to be returning. So we will be able to compile some information to get a decent idea of that. Okay, it's better now. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So we have three surveys going on right now, one from OSPI that's asking kids questions, one that is a thought exchange that's very specific to hybrid learning and in-person learning, and then a needs assessment that starts after spring break. And on the spring break one, we do have a question about their feelings towards returning to in-person.
Any other questions from the board before we let Jewel resume? Okay, Jewel, it's all yours.
All right. Thank you. So the next one is the seven day rate. If you recall, the CDC, when they first came out with what recommendations they were doing for bringing back students, they said to try the seven day rate to get below 100. So we got to 101.6, but now we're back up to 114.1. So that again is a little bit of an uptick. This is the ZIP code data. And remember, it's a week behind and it comes out on Wednesdays. So we've gone down in every ZIP code this week, but we had an upsurge the week before. So the ZIP code data has gone down this week, this last week. Hospitalizations, we had a pretty big spike at the beginning of last week. Then it came down and it went back up again over the weekend. That again is another one of the metrics for phase two or phase three, and our hospitalization rate has gone up above five new cases in the last week. So that's not necessarily a good trend. Our positivity rate has gone back up again, just like all the other graphs. You know, it went down a little the week of March 21st, and then it slowly gained more. Again, we've never gone below the 10%, which was one of the metrics. All the counties around us, I know I quit doing county data from the region, but all the counties around us are below 10%, but we're at 13.8 as of today, or yesterday. School age cases, this is a week behind. Also, we had a little bit of an uptick to 19% of the total cases in, in the region were school age students. Go to the next one. The next one is a new slide of trend data since we came back in. So February 8th, we came in with our tutoring groups, and the rate was 594th per hundred thousand, and our, our percentage of the total cases in the county were 17%. And then after that, the next weeks, each following week, the rate, basically the rate has gone down per hundred thousand, and the number of cases per students in the ages of five to 18 has basically remained the same for their last, for three weeks in February and beginning of March. And then it went up again a little bit this last week up to 19%. So that's the highest school rate data we've had so far, but basically it's kind of leveled off after the February rate.
Jewel, these numbers are reflective only of the Yakima School District?
No, these numbers are in Yakima County.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Now Stacy has the school district data. Okay, this is the new forecast built on where we were at last week. I built it based on the same regression calculations that I did before. If you notice, we do have an uptick that goes above 200, right after spring break. Actually, it peaks at the 19th of April to the 25th of April, and then it comes down again. This goes out to the last end date there is May 9th. I'm sorry, it's not on the screen, but the last end date is May 9th. That's it, Superintendent Green.
Thank you, Jewel. Again, greatly appreciate expertise and the time you're taking to walk us through the data that you do prepare for us each week. Stacy?
So I'm guessing everybody can see that, hopefully. Um, this, let's make sure I got the right chart in here. Uh oh, looks like I have the wrong chart in here. Okay, well, let's see. I was juggling some stuff around. So if you take a look, we had nine, if you go back to, let's say, March 1st, when we started back with our hybrid, first go around of hybrid model, you saw that student cases are definitely increasing and adult cases dwindling. And so the week of March 15th through the 21st, we had nine cases, seven students and two staff. Last week, we had 14 student cases and one staff case. And of course, we can make an assumption that our staff are getting vaccinated, and that's why staff members are reduced so drastically. But when you look at those 14, most of those were K-5 students. And I think you recognize that, that we had, what had been shared with us, that the K-5 students were less likely to have confirmed positive COVID cases. So that's kind of an aha moving forward. At this point in time, I, let's see, do I not have the investigations in here? I'm sorry, let me go back here. I must have switched those out for positive cases. We have, we've done 506 investigations. We had 115 investigations done last week, or the 8th through the 14th, 115 investigations, and then the 15th through the 20, no, let me back that up. I'm getting confused looking at my charts, sorry. Last week, the 15th through the 21st, we had 100 and, quick for last, 115 investigations, which resulted in nine cases. This last week, we had 116 investigations that resulted in 15 cases. And so our, our number of investigations that are going on with our health services staff is simply overwhelming. To think in the last two weeks, our health services staff has done 230 investigations that have resulted in 24 cases. I mean, it's pretty significant when you look at what's happening in our school district. And the result of a lot of that was the introduction of our first hybrid, and then, of course, on the 15th, the introduction of our second go around hybrid. So everybody is, is back in school. We're still doing some really steady with asymptomatic testing, 38 through 9, 36, for a total of 563 tests that we have administered in the school district. And again, that's been leveled out here. We have added, as our community partner, we've added the Sun Dome. We got the flyer from the Sun Dome today, and so that has went out to all staff. So we are continuing our work with the Farm Workers Clinic as a community partner, as well as Memorial Austria and now the Sun Dome, serving phase 1B, tier one and tier two individuals. I do apologize for that slide when we were messing around, excuse me, messing around today, but what I shared with Trevor last week was that, that at 116 investigations, I don't know if you remember, but right before that, the week before that, when we shared with you, we were at 26 investigations for the entire week, and like 36 investigations the week before. So the last couple of weeks, to know that we've been over 115 investigations per week, and their number of cases are jumping dramatically, we're very concerned moving forward, and especially in that spike that we might see within our school district right after spring break, as to what those numbers will be and, and what we'll, what we will do moving forward. Our health services staff is, is at the max, the capacity at which, at what they can handle, the way the scheduling is right now with all students in two days a week. And so with the upward trend, very concerned about our ability to continue to support our students, staff and families. And additionally, knowing that we don't want the structure we've put in place to keep everybody safe to collapse under this type of load. We are working, we meet weekly with the Health District around everything. And again, we're continuing to share on a weekly basis investigations, follow-up and contact tracing, as well as positive cases that we are doing. So questions?
Yeah, Stacy, I, I would, I want to ask one question I think is going to just really definitive statement and understanding for the board and for those especially watching tonight. First of all, the work of your group to conduct investigations is incredible because I can only imagine how much time that takes to see one, one possible exposure investigation from start to finish. And I would call to the attention of the board that the Yakima Health District is supporting what we're doing as a district, in part because we are so large and they would not be able to handle the investigations that we have in our system, and it would affect investigations countywide. And it would affect investigations countywide. So having said that, we are in this hybrid model with A, B, Monday, Tuesday, A, A group on Monday, Tuesday, B on Thursday, Friday. And I know that the board is not pushing for a full reentry like we see many other districts potentially doing. But Stacy, the question I have for you is knowing how stretched teams are, if we were to go to full reentry, would we be able to manage all the number of investigations?
You know, the answer is no, we would, the system would collapse around us. And we would be open from a health standpoint, would be wide open for positive cases to migrate within the school system and close down classrooms as well as buildings. And so it's a very, it's, it's very much a concern and on our minds. If I could go back, I've got some numbers. Our, our total number prior to, like, if we go back three weeks, we were like 23, 27, 36. Then that second week, we jumped up to 78, then 116 and 118. Chronologically, when it comes into looking at the, the number of cases that are being worked on each day, our health department has shared with us, they do not have the capacity to conduct those investigations on their own. And so again, we're working alongside those. But we again are very proud of the fact that at this point we have not had in-school transmission or in-building transmission of this virus. But again, at the rate and the amount of workload that our health services individuals are under, I, I can't see us trying to multiply that in any shape or form and be successful with safety.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions from the board?
Questions or comments from board members?
Martha, I do have maybe comments and questions. So with the last two presentations, it's making me rethink my request for the information on parameters. Because I don't know if that's going to do anything for helping the board or myself make a decision. Because we're seeing that just what by one of the variables that, that that was just mentioned, right? That the capacity to, to, to do investigations or not. So that's far more in better information. So I'm wondering is, you know, because right now we get, we got as Superintendent Green mentioned, and I'm gonna say it, it's a political issue, right? You have people who are saying, you know, the science is clear, schools are safe, they're, we need to send school kids to school. And on the other side, we're saying, no, it's not that clear, it's not that clear yet. And, and so forth. So there's this thing, so, you know, I think we're getting pulled in two, two directions. And we're, we're holding firm. And I'm glad we're holding firm and doing what's best for the district. So I guess my, my request is, how can, Trevor, I guess, how can you help us to determine the risks and the benefits of sending kids back to school? Is there like a formula? Is there a, a tool or checklist that we can go through and say, okay, we got that one, okay, we got, we got nine out of the 10. So let's send kids back to school full-time, full in person. So for me, something like that would, would be more helpful rather than the parameter. So I don't know, I don't know if that's even possible.
I, I, I wish, Director Navarro, I wish that we had something like that. And I think the closest we can come is what we're doing right now with the work that both Jewel and Stacy are putting forth to bring in the data to us every week. I will say that I believe summer is coming at the perfect time, knowing how we've had, you know, multiple people vaccinated. I think 15, 15% of the US population is what I've heard. The accessibility to vaccines in our area has increased dramatically over the last month. If we make the decision, which I believe, you know, we're holding firm thus far on hybrid and are able to maintain that until June, when school gets out, and then knowing that more people will continue to be vaccinated, I would anticipate that we could then be looking at a full reopening in September. But we're gonna have to really wait and see if, if the data is gonna support that, which is why my suggestion would be, and I'll send this to the board members, to each of you in an email about what my, my recommendation would be. But the recommendation verbally now sharing with you would be that we stay in hybrid for the remainder of this school year. And then that we plan on moving forward to a full reopeners in September, barring any exceptional, unanticipated spikes in, in August, I would say. But there needs to be a planning forward so that we can start thinking about next year. And again, I'll send that to the board in a email form so that you have that information that I just shared. But thank you, Raymond. I, I just wish there were something more definitive. But I think we have proven both nationally, at the state level and certain, certainly regionally, that nobody has the magic formula to say it's gonna work. We're, we're doing the best that we can. And I think that in Yakima, I believe we're doing a better job than many other places.
Kind of along with all that, is it possible to use maybe some of our, our money to put out some kind of public service announcement to our community that really encourages them to, like Trevor mentioned earlier, the people who stick with masking and stick, and Don mentioned it too, stick with the protocols and social distancing as a way for the community to help us get their kids back into school full-time and really hit that hard. And, and sometimes that's just that little push to keep people going and moving in that direction. I don't know if that's something we can do or can afford to do, or if that's worth pursuing.
I, I think some, maybe some checklist, like we all know already, right? Who's, who's more at risk of contracting COVID-19, right? Who, we had, I know, I'm not sure about that. But you know, if you're a certain age, if you have certain medical conditions. So all those type of things, I mean, how many teachers are over the age of whatever, right? That are more at risk? How many kids do we have that have conditions that could? So those, that kind of information, I know it's probably a lot harder to, to get and to look at. But I think in terms of a checklist, that might, that might help us. I, I'm not sure, I'm just trying to think here on how, how we can make a decision on to move forward or not. And not base that on, on what we, you know, on feelings or the current political winds or, or even the suggestions from the state and the governor. So I'm just kind of wondering about if that's something we can even look at.
Kirsten, would you like to talk about the decision tree?
Sure. I just wanted to mention that, and Trevor's done a good job of following this or actually kind of leading it. I find that when, when some of the information that comes out from the Yakima School District, it ends up following, following up on the Department of Health's decision tree could be just coincidence. But I can put the link in the chat. It is kind of a nice little checklist, like you're asking for Raymond, that, you know, allows you to look at the different information coming in from your community and help you to kind of follow a different pathway, which I think Yakima has, has done, you'll find when you see that. And then if I may, while I have the, the microphone, I just wanted to mention that Yakima School District has been a part of the Show Us Your Mask campaign, mainly on social media. And that is a regional campaign. And we have done, participated with that intermittently throughout the closure and actually do have it planned for Wednesday to start again in anticipation of high activity over spring break. So if you are a follower of any of our social media sites, you might pay attention to that because I agree with you, Norm, just that little push to the community can, can help make some reminders. And so you can see that on district social media, starting tomorrow and through spring break.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any other questions or comments from board members? I think it's important that we continue to have these conversations. And I so appreciate the ongoing presentations from Jewel and Stacy there. Those presentations are really informing the board's decision-making progress. And you guys are really contributing in a positive way to the tough decisions that the board is gonna have to make here before too long about, you know, what do we do and when do we do it? As far as bringing kids back in. We do have some, we will have some stipulations from the governor. I expect that, you know, we won't have an option not to do. But part of that is it's too early to have that kind of a decision come out. I mean, we don't know what it's gonna look like when we get to the end of school and when summer, so when summer is here. But there are some deadlines coming up from OSPI that the district is gonna have to comply with as far as our planning for the fall. And I think it's important for us to have these, these ongoing discussions and certainly the presentations from Jewel and Stacy as part of this decision process. So thank you for the questions. Thank you to Jewel and Stacy for your presentations on this. And I don't, I don't know that I want to say I'm looking forward to what, what you're going to present after spring break, but maybe I am, just to help inform us. So thank you so much. Next item on our agenda are, is a legislative proposal discussion. I just wanted to remind the board that the window is open for WASDA's legislative proposal process. You'll remember that legislative proposals are submitted in the spring. And they can come from board members or boards or WASDA committees. They are then evaluated by the Legislative Committee in, first in a meeting in May and then again in a meeting in June. And at the end of that process, those legislative proposals that will be going on to the delegates at General Assembly in September are finalized, as well as this is the time to consider permanent positions that would go to the Resolutions Committee. They have the same window that we do for legislative positions. So I just wanted to surface that to the board. And if you think of, if you think of any positions that you might want our board to, to forward into the process, or if you want to do that on your own, I'm more than happy to help you. And the window closes on May 14th. So we have a little bit of time, but May 14th will be here before we know it. So there, there may in fact be proposals that are gonna surface out of whatever happens in this legislative session that we're currently in. So I just wanted to, to alert you all to that. Are there any other items of board interest that board members wish to surface?
Martha, I don't know if it's appropriate here, but I'm wondering if Trevor could give an update on Doug Caplicki. I know that he's, he's been struggling. And so, and I hear he's doing a lot better now. So I just wanted to make mention of that, that he's, I hear that he's doing a lot better and just don't want him to worry about, you know, anything else but his health at this time. So, and just to take care of himself and get better so he can, he can come back.
We will need to be careful because we don't want to compromise private information, so.
I, I will, I'll send an update to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any other items of board interest from board members? Trevor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add.
We do have a need for executive session still, correct?
Correct, 15 minutes.
Okay. And this is for the purpose of?
Legal matters.
So I would entertain a motion for, for us to move into executive session for the purpose of discussion with legal counsel regarding litigation and other legal matters.
So moved.
Second.
By Norm, seconded by Graciela. Jennifer, could you do a roll call, please?
Donald Davis Jr.
Yes.
Graciela Vinaueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Yes.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Aye.
Norm Walker.
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been, we've been sitting for quite a while. You all want a little bit of a break before we move to executive session? Or do you just want to move over there now?
I'd like to just push on.
Let's just move on, move on.
All right, so just give us a couple of minutes while we shut out of this meeting and access the link in, for the executive session. And then we'll likely be back in about 15 minutes. So thank you all. I don't know that Don will be joining us since he had to join us on the phone. So is there anything else for the good of the order?
Nope.
Anything from board members? Okay. Then I will adjourn this meeting. And our next meeting is scheduled for April 12th. Have a great spring vacation. Enjoy yourselves, don't get silly. And let us know if there's a baby. Trevor?
We'll do, we'll do.
Okay, see you guys.
Bye-bye.